Well, good morning, John. This is Mayor McPhail here. We might as well get started with our meeting this morning, so we'll call it to order at 9:03 a.m. We have a little bit of housekeeping to do prior to your presentation, so we'll start with the adoption of the agenda and a recommendation at West Elgin Council, committee of the whole adopt the agenda as circulated. Can I have a mover in second or for that? Teresa and Bill, all in favor? And that is carried certainly a reminder to disclose any pecuniary interest. Reason for the meeting today is integrity commissioner training. John, I guess what I'm going to do is I'm going to allow you to, well, I guess we have to move that motion that you're gonna have to read. You're gonna have to read that for me because I don't got my glasses.
So we're good. We adopted the agenda. The next item is just John. It's not a
Oh, okay. It's not a motion?
No, just discussing what he's doing.
Okay, that's fine then, John. We'll turn the next segment over to you. Welcome to West Elgin, and we're all looking forward to what you have to share with us this morning.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of council. It's my pleasure to be here this morning, and I really would like to thank the C O and the clerk for setting up the training for us. As you know, we've recently become your integrity commissioner. It's my firm, Airdan Burles. I do oversee all of our accountability mandates and but I'm just, I'm not the only person who is the integrity commissioner for the for your municipality and for a number of others. We have, we have a number of people. I'll show you a slide at the end of the first presentation this morning. Congratulations to all of you, by the way, on your, I was gonna say election, but four out of five of you have been acclaimed. So, well done. Anyway, I'm thrilled to be here. As I said, we recently became your integrity commissioner. We went through a public procurement process and we were selected as the well, we were awarded the contract through the county of Elgin and then have taken on a number of engagements with a number of municipalities within your beautiful county, including yourselves. You, you aren't unknown to me. We've, we've done some work for your municipality in the last few years. We handled a contentious tax sale matter. In fact, two tax sale matters that were rather controversial contentious, and so we have a bit of familiarity with your municipality. Today, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm going to be talking to you about three main topics. The first two are included on the PowerPoint presentation that is, that is on the screen right now. Codes of conduct and the role of the integrity commissioner. And, and then the second part, perhaps after a short bio break, I will be talking to you about the municipal conflict of interest act. So, without further ado, code of conduct. By the way, just to be absolutely clear, today I'm not going to do a deep, deep dive into your, your code and explain every provision in the code. I'm going to be talking at a bit of a high level. I will be identifying a few clauses that are important for you to be aware of, but I won't be doing a deep dive into the code, but by all means, you're, you're you're free to ask me anything you'd like. And, Mr. Mayor, I have no problem if someone would like to ask me a question throughout the presentation. It would probably work better for time, and I'll be honest, if maybe we leave it to the end of each segment, and then we can probably better budget for, for the time today, but I have no problem if someone would like to ask me a question. Please just, just indicate. So I'm looking at my screen. I'm not really following anyone who might be putting up their hand on the, on the virtual settings. So just, just letting you know. So, codes of conduct, they're mandatory for all municipalities in Ontario. If you recall, codes of conduct used to be permissive. They used to be permitted by a municipality. A municipality could establish a code of conduct. This was all changed in 2018 when the province put forward amendments in Bill 68. And as of March the first, 2019, every municipality in Ontario has to have a code of conduct that applies not only to members of council, but also to members of local boards, and the section is right there. It's really interesting. A code of conduct occupies an interesting place in the municipal act. It's not a bylaw per se, because it's very clear there in subsection two. The bylaw itself cannot create its contravention as an offense, and the municipality cannot apply an administrative monetary penalty for any breach. Now, you could do that for any other breach of a bylaw. It's also not a policy. If you look at the mandatory policies that every municipality must, must adopt and maintain, they're, they're listed in section 270 of the municipal act, and that's not where a code of conduct is. It occupies this interesting place because is it a bylaw? Is it a policy? I would say it's actually neither one. It's its own entity. It is a code of conduct. You enacted your first code of conduct for members of council and members of local boards. You adopted it on April the 26th, 2018 as Schedule A to, to your bylaw there. What is a code of conduct? Now, I put up an excerpt from, from Greg Levine's really terrific book, which I have on my shelf over here. It's called Municipal Ethics Regimes. It talks about, well, municipal accountability and municipal ethics in Ontario, including codes of conduct, but also lobbyist registrars, lobbyist registries, ombudsmen's and auditor generals, which are all accountability officers that a municipality may have in the, in the municipal act, except for the integrity commissioner, which you must have. Mr. Levine says, "Codes of ethics in the public sector are intended to promote integrity in public affairs and to provide guides to acceptable behavior." I say, and this is the final bullet on the screen, that a code of conduct, it is not an encyclopedia. What I mean by that is you cannot look up every particular instance where there may be an allegation or a concern about some ethical conduct and find a guideline as to what do you do with that particular, particular matter. What the code does is essentially, in my view, it sets out a number of standards, which may be supplemented by a number of prohibitions or regulations to indicate what is acceptable behavior for members of council. Now, I've looked at your current code and, well, my view is it probably could use a little bit of work. My suggestion would be, and we don't have to do this right away, but perhaps sometime this term, with your concurrence, I would suggest that it might be appropriate to have a refresh and look at your code. There's, there's a few things in it that I'm not so sure work so well. So, there are four mandatory subject matters that the province has indicated must be in every code of conduct. I think what happened is the province was looking at codes when it decided to say, hey, every municipality has to have a code of conduct and said, hmm, this is really interesting. Some of the codes we've looked at are pretty skeletal. They're pretty rudimentary. Some of them don't say much at all. So, the province came back and reserved onto the authority of the municipal, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, the power under the statute to enact a regulation, to make a regulation, and the minister used this. And in February of 2018, prescribed four mandatory subject matters that have to be addressed in every code. The first one is gifts, benefits and hospitality. And the requirement there essentially typically is, is that you, as members of council, are not entitled to receive any gifts, benefits or hospitality arising directly or indirectly with the discharge of your official duties. Why? Well, if you look at your oath of office, the declaration that you made under 232, it says, you will not receive any recompense, any, any kind of compensation, any promise for payment to discharge your, your vote, to, to vote in a certain way. Okay? Well, that is essentially what the gifts, benefits or hospitality provisions are supposed to go towards. So typically, most codes say this, you are not entitled to receive any gifts, benefits or hospitality arising directly or indirectly from your discharge of your office. Why? Well, because if you were to seem to be getting something, some sort of payment, some sort of benefit, well, then someone's saying, you know, you're, you're buying the vote. So, typically what happens in codes is there is an outright prohibition. You are not entitled to receive any gift or benefit or any kind of hospitality at all. Well, if you think about it, that doesn't make total sense though, because of course you get paid a salary for your public service. Now, it may be not grandiose. It may be not significant, but it is something. Well, you should be entitled at law to receive some compensation for the service that you provide. So that typically is included as an exception or as a carve out to the general rule. The next one, respectful conduct, including conduct towards officers and employees of the municipality. So, it starts off, it says respectful conduct. That means you have to deal with everybody that you come into contact with respectfully, civilly and courteously. Okay? Now, that makes sense. Any member of the public, yourselves as members of council, whom you may disagree with from time to time. And because it's so important, including staff. Now, it's really interesting that the province did this. They didn't just leave the requirement at respectful conduct. The province thought it was important enough to say, including conduct towards officers and employees of the municipality. Why? Well, because one of the greatest sources of complaints that we and other integrity commissioners typically get is the complaints against members of council made by staff. Why? Because council hasn't been acting respectfully, courteously and, and honorably towards the staff. It is probably one of the two biggest sources of complaints that we get from council, from, from the public and from, from as, as complainants, our staff. Now, there's a recent case that came out just last year. I think it came out sometime in, if I'm not mistaken, in December, December 12th, I think of 2021. So, very recent case. Name of the case is Villeneuve versus North Stormont. And what happened in that case? Well, what happened is councillor Villeneuve had, had some tension with the C O of that municipality, and councillor Villeneuve didn't necessarily want to bite her tongue. And so, at an open council meeting, she essentially accused the C O of lying to the municipality and lying to council. She said to him, "Why are you not telling us the truth? Why are you not telling us everything? Why did you do this? Why did you do that?" She essentially cross-examined him. The C O was not pleased by this, by being called out in public and basically being called a liar in public and filed a complaint with the integrity commissioner. The integrity commissioner came back, cited this section and cited the provision in the code of conduct in North Stormont and said, "You just can't do that. You have to, you have to deal respectfully with staff." In fact, there is a council staff relations policy that is mandated under section 270 of the municipal act that says, "You have to set out as a municipality, a policy that says how you will deal with staff." Typically, it says, "Council members will be respectful of staff. Equally, staff will be respectful of the governance aspects and the fact that council is, is the elected representative body for the municipality, but each one should stay in their lane and each should deal with each other, not disparagingly, not in any way that's denigrating or ridiculing, and with respect." Well, the integrity commissioner found that's not what councillor Villeneuve did, and he indicated this is a significant transgression and recommended a significant penalty. Well, council agreed and imposed the penalty. Councillor Villeneuve was unhappy and ended up going to court on a judicial review application, which is something that I'll talk to you about at the end of this first session. And what did the court say? The court said, "There's a clear policy." But why is that policy put in place? That policy is put in place because there is an imbalance of power between members of staff and members of council. Members of council are on the DS. They sit at the council table, and staff essentially are only asked to speak when they're spoken to. Staff do not have the last word and really don't have an ability to defend themselves. That's why in that particular case, the court said, "No, no, the decision of council and the recommendations of the integrity commissioner, including the findings, were absolutely reasonable. In fact, correct in, in law." So, please, please bear that in mind. The second type of complaint that we get is that members of council have breached confidential information. As you know, as members of council, you will get confidential information in a source that no other person will get. Okay? Typically, you as members of council, under AMPIPA, have no greater right to any information than any member of the public, with one exception. And that's with closed meetings under section 239 of the municipal act. In those meetings, you, as members of council, as the governing decision-making body for the municipality, will receive information that no member of the public will be entitled to receive. That information is really only for council and any staff that you decide is appropriate to be at that meeting, apart from the clerk who has to be at the meeting. Okay? Now, you may invite all of your members of senior staff, or you may only invite perhaps the C O and the clerk, depending on the matter. It's typically at council's pleasure. You will receive information, and that information is sanct or sanct. Okay? It is not to be released or disclosed, and what we find is we're often investigating who breached confidentiality. I'm recently dealing with one matter where a municipality was currently hiring its new C O, and the C O asked if she could meet with the new council, with her new council. And she hadn't accepted the offer yet, and so she was meeting, and it was a confidential session. Well, what did one councillor do during the meeting? On his social media platform, emailed or texted or chatted with someone asking questions about the C O who was being interviewed? Completely, completely wrong. Okay? So, there is a recent case on just this point as well. This came out about a year ago, September of 2021. The name of the case, oh, I'm sorry, it was September 2022, not a year ago. It was only like about four months ago. Name of the case is Fallus versus City of Aurelia. Jay Fallus was a council, is a council member in Aurelia, and he went to a closed session of council where council was discussing the possible awarding of an RFP contract for the development of waterfront property, something that had been in the works for about two years, something that was very controversial. They had a briefing that day from their in-house city solicitor. Their solicitor had briefed them and had indicated the award of the contract should be awarded to this entity for these reasons. Well, councillor Fallus was unhappy with what he was hearing and said to council, "We need a second opinion. I don't agree with the opinion of our city solicitor." Rest of council said, "Nope, we're good with it." No one seconded the motion for him to, to get a second opinion, and the matter moved forward. I am assuming direction was given at that meeting. What happened is councillor Fallus decided, "Well, if the council won't authorize me to get an opinion, I'll get one on my own." And he went, thinking he was doing the right thing, but so misguided, went and hired a lawyer, came back two weeks later, surprise, surprise, "Look what I got. My lawyer says our city solicitor is wrong." Council went, "Councillor Fallus, what information did you give to your lawyer in order for him to provide an opinion?" He said, "Well, I gave him the city solicitor's opinion and I told him what we had discussed." Wrong, clearly a breach of confidential information, but councillor Fallus thought he had a very good defense. He said, "But my lawyer is subject to solicitor-client privilege." Well, what happened? Complaint filed by the mayor and I believe another member of council. The integrity commissioner looked at it and said, "The cardinal rule of being a council member is you do not disclose confidential information because it could create risk, it could create damages, injury and possible consequences." So, you do not do that. It increases the risk to the municipality significantly if you disclose confidential information. Okay? The, again, the integrity commissioner in that case said significant transgression, warranting a very large penalty, and council imposed the penalty. Councillor Fallus decided, "No, I'm gonna go to court." The court came back and said, "What don't you understand? Confidential information is confidential information. It's like Las Vegas. What is said in a closed meeting stays in a closed meeting." So, please, please keep that in mind. The final one, the use of the property of the municipality. So, property here writ large. It's not like real property only. It's personal property. It's intellectual property. It's anything that belongs to the municipality. So, I investigated a matter a number of years ago where the mayor of a municipality had worn the chain of office in her campaign election photograph. Clearly wrong. The chain of office belongs to not the mayor. It belongs to municipality. And what is it to be used for? Well, in that particular municipality, for official functions at council meetings, at formal settings, and at meetings with, with delegates and dignitaries. It was not to be used for campaign election matters. And so, we ended up finding that the chain of office belonged to the municipality and could not be used by the mayor in that case. Interesting enough, there was a, there was a decision, there was a report just a short while ago, a couple of weeks ago. I believe this is completely wrong, where integrity commissioner said, "No, the chain of office belongs to the mayor and can be used at her discretion." Totally disagree. You may recall headline making news from several years ago where the mayor of Stoville had, having a bit of fun and dearly loved his little dog and put the chain of office around his dog's neck and decided to have photographs on his social media. Plainly wrong. It's disrespectful of the chain of office and it's using it in a way that's not required, that's not permitted at law. And so, those are just some examples. So, it doesn't just mean the property, you know, using the town hall photographs, the logos of the municipality, the branding, any official marks, trademarks, copyrighted materials of the municipality, not to be used for other than the discharge of official duties. Okay? Those are the four mandatory subject matters. I'm now going to show you your code of conduct, just an outline of the main topics in your code of conduct. And you'll see, I've highlighted in red on the page provisions of your code that align with the four mandatory subject matters under Regulation 5518. So, you'll see gifts and participation at events, interaction with the public, other members and municipal staff, and confidential information are all set out right there. And on the next page, you'll see the use of municipal property is also set out. Okay? Now, your code has a number of provisions. As I indicated, my view, in my respectful opinion, the code really could use some work. In particular, I've gone back here to the first page, section six, conflict of interest. There is a real problem with it, and I can tell you, we've recently received a complaint dealing with just that particular section. It just came in, so I, and I, of course, you'll see in a moment that we have to deal with matters confidentially, so I can't say more than that about it, but there is a complaint recently brought in, so I am a little concerned about the conflict of interest provisions. There are a number of other provisions there, as you will see. The preamble, by the way, many people will probably try to apply it because it has certain statements and principles. Those are just like a preamble, for instance, like a purpose clause in a statute or recitals in a bylaw or a contract. They're not operable, enforceable provisions. Okay? There's also some, some other things. Maybe there was an issue with nepotism at some point. It found its way into the, into the code. I don't typically see that clause, even though I have seen it. There are things about dealing with the obstruction of us doing our work or acting in reprisal if there is a complaint. And you'll see that there's some other provisions, including section 21 judicial investigation, which I have no idea why it's in there. It's, just doesn't make a lot of, a lot of sense to me. So, what is complaint protocol? Well, a complaint protocol is typically a procedural guide for how the integrity commissioner and the parties who are involved in a complaint will deal with an investigation. It seeks to typically provide for a process and procedure that is fair and equitable to all parties, not just the member who's under investigation, but the complainant, any witnesses, and attempts to also ensure that the integrity commissioner follows what is a fair and equitable process. You don't have a separate complaint protocol, but you do have provisions in your code themselves that speak to the process, which again, could use a little bit of tightening up. So, what does a complaint protocol typically do? Well, the ones that we've created will talk about things like, how is a complaint filed? To whom is it submitted? Is it required to be in a particular form? What do we do when we get a complaint? We typically do an intake analysis. We have an internal checklist that we go through to make sure that the complaint meets certain standards and criteria before we will proceed with it. Right? We review it on that basis. We don't, do not, we do not decide to do a full investigation every time that a complaint is filed. I think this has been very clear, and I'll speak to it in just a moment. Most integrity commissioners across Ontario have taken the position, just because we can investigate a complaint, doesn't mean that we have to investigate a complaint in every instance, and I'll speak about it in just a moment. So, we do intake and review procedures. We typically also build in a summary dismissal and termination provision. Now, at law, it's my view, under the legislation act, anytime a person is delegated authority and powers to do certain things, as we are as integrity commissioners, you have all ancillary powers that go with that. So, as I indicated to you, integrity commissioners typically take the position that just because we can investigate doesn't mean that we have to. There are certain instances where a complaint on its face looks completely frivolous. It looks potentially vexatious, especially if we receive a number of other complaints by the same complainant without much veracity to the allegations. It may be an abusive process. It may be something that we don't deal with at all. It may relate to a council decision, and we don't look at council decisions. Those are political and policy decisions that council makes as a elected assembly, as a legislative body, which we don't look at. So, for all of those reasons, we may decide not to pursue a formal investigation. Other reasons are, it doesn't warrant a full investigation, or the matter that's alleged, while even if found to be true, and there is a breach, might be so trivial in its nature that it doesn't warrant the public expense of doing an investigation. Okay? We have, in numerous cases, decided not to proceed on those bases. Now, as I indicated to you, at law, I believe we're on sure grounding to say that we do not have to proceed. You can imagine how a complainant feels after they file a complaint if we just summarily dismiss it. We often get accusations level against us where it says, "Well, obviously you're not gonna investigate because you want to retain the contract or you want to be reappointed." Okay? So, what we typically do is when we summarily dismiss a complaint, we do take the time to we do take the time to write a notice to the complainant to indicate expressly why we do that. Now, you might say, that's probably a lot of work. It is a little bit of work, admittedly. I think it's money well spent and I'll say it on this basis. You as a municipality, under section 223.3 sub six of the municipal act, have to indemnify the integrity commissioner for all the work that we do, including, and it's very explicit, including any defence if someone should bring any proceeding or complaint against us. We are entitled to defend ourselves. One of the roots, and I'll indicate this again at the end, is that a complainant may file a complaint with the Ontario Ombudsman and we'd have to respond. If we have already provided a notice that specifies all of the reasons why we did not proceed with the full investigation, that will go a long way to answering the question. In fact, and I'll admit it, we've received complaints against ourselves because we haven't proceeded with an investigation. The Ontario Ombudsman has in except in one instance, not come back to us to ask us to defend our position. They've just issued a report indicating what its decision is. In one case, the complainant had not shown them the, the notice. And so the Ontario Ombudsman was not aware that we had written a full notice explaining the reasons why. I think in the long run, that'll really help and serves to cut down on any additional costs that may be attended to if there is a, a formal complaint to the Ontario Ombudsman or otherwise. The complaint protocol should also set out the process for how the evidence is gathered. So typically we will receive a complaint. The complaint without, without saying more is one-sided. It's only the, the complainant's view of the matter. Should the respondent member have an opportunity to, to have his or her say? Of course. Typically, our complaints will indicate that the member of council will be entitled to make a response. How fair would the process be if we just went on a one-sided view of things? Clearly that's wrong. Is the complainant entitled to see the response of the member and possibly file a reply? Typically, yes. And does it go back again? Potentially where there is something called a sur reply. Now you can see how this could go on and infinitum. Typically, like most litigation, an applicant or a plaintiff is entitled to bring a case. The defendant or the respondent is entitled to respond, file the defence or the response. And typically the applicant or the plaintiff has one more opportunity. We've set typically the system up in the exact same way. There are timelines that should be specified. Otherwise, you can just imagine how this could go completely off the rails. These things are supposed to be dealt with promptly and expeditiously to the, to the extent that they can. Hey, some complaints can be, they're one, they're one incident, one thing, no witnesses, just one thing. Typically, those can be dealt with relatively simply. More complex ones that go after a number of incidents, perhaps over a number of months, perhaps a continuing pattern of conduct with many witnesses could take significantly longer. Typically, our complaint system at the office is we try from the date that we believe we have a complete complaint in, and that's not the date that's necessarily filed. Because what we find is complaints are made and we just don't have the evidence. Allegations are made, but there's no evidence there. Well, we're not going to commence until we know what's, what's at play. So once we have what we deem to be a complete complaint, typically it's about 90 days from the date we receive it to the date that we report, we file a report to council, not the date that we actually report. Okay, now it could be quicker, but it could be significantly longer. We've had complaints that have lasted months. I think the longest might have been about nine months or so. Lots of delays, lots of requests for adjournments, things like that. Okay, what about the final comments from parties? Well, if we find that there may be a sustaining of the complaint and we do find that the member has possibly breached the code of conduct or some other ethical policy, then yes, we will provide a copy of the final draft report to the member with an opportunity to make final comments on it. Because that is the member's opportunity to reply, to respond, to defend themselves. Okay, sometimes we show it to the complainant. It really depends and we typically build that in, into our own process. How is the report completed? How is it transmitted? How is it received and when is it considered by council? All typically things that are set out on complaint protocol. And again, I would suggest to you, it might be a wise thing to put in a robust complaint protocol for your municipality. Okay, so that's the end of codes of conduct. I hope I've explained it a little bit. Again, happy to take any questions that you'd like, perhaps at the end of this first session. I'm now going to talk about our role as the integrity commissioner for your municipality and what we do as integrity commissioners. There are two basic services that are inherent in the office of the integrity commissioner. And these were set out by Madam Justice Bellamy in her report in the early aughts in the city of Toronto, the MFP leasing scandal. You'll remember it. This is the one where the city of Toronto had entered into a computer leasing contract with MFP. I don't know, I think the original contract was something like $24 million and somehow it ballooned to 82 million without any accountability, without any approval seemingly. There was a public inquiry and Madam Justice Bellamy recommended that the city of Toronto put in place an integrity commissioner to look after the ethical conduct of not only members of council, but also staff. And she said, there are two main functions. The first one is an advisory function and that's preventative in nature. The integrity commissioner should be able to provide advice to members of council to help guide them before, before any actions are taken. The second one is an investigative, investigatory or enforcement function. And that's to look at allegations of contravention. Now, why did she recommend these two basic services? Well, she did because that's how the provincial government, the office of the integrity commissioner and the federal comparable office, the ethics and conflict of interest commissioner is set up at the federal government. It's those two basic functions. Sometimes you'll hear of municipalities, there's not that many in Ontario. City of Peterborough is one, where their city solicitor took the position, you cannot do both. If you're an integrity commissioner, you can't give advice and also enforce it. And so they have two integrity commissioners, one person who is essentially the ethics advisor and the other person who is the investigator. I've never believed that that's the case. And again, I point to the federal and the provincial governments, what Madam Justice Bellamy said in the MFP or public inquiry report and the way that most municipalities have set it up and the way the system's been set up in the municipal act. The integrity commissioner is now, as of March the first, 2019, a mandatory statutory officer. You had to appoint one. You appointed Mark McDonald, I believe, last term and he was responsible. We report directly to council. We do not report to the head of council. We do not report to any individual members of council and we certainly do not report to staff. We report to council. What's important and what's one of the hallmarks of what we do is we exercise our functions independently. Imagine what the system would look like if staff were telling us what to do. Or if council could turn around and say, we don't want you to investigate that. Wow, the whole accountability scheme would fall away if that was the case. The functions are assigned by the municipality. You have assigned to Aaron Burles, our firm, all of the functions under the municipal act. And I've set them out there. I've paraphrased them, but here is where they are in the section 223.3 sub one. The functions of the integrity commissioner are these. You'll see on the screen some text in red. The reason I've put some text in red is to show you how the integrity commissioner office had been significantly enhanced by the Bill 68 amendments. Prior to March the first, 2019, the only powers that the integrity commissioner had were what's set out in black. And you might be saying to yourself, wow, there's more in red than there is black. Yes, the functions of the integrity commissioner prior to March the first, 2019 were very, very limited. They were basically, well, you could look after any complaints that were filed. It was, as I indicated, the powers of the office were augmented. Not only can integrity commissioners continue to apply and enforce the code of conduct or any ethical rules, procedures, policies at the municipality. However, we can now also look at the application of sections five, 5.1 and 5.2 of the municipal conflict of interest act. Prior to the Bill 68 amendments, integrity commissioners didn't have to know anything about the MCIA, which is the second part of my, my training this morning. All they had to know is that there was something out there and it dealt with financial conflicts of interest. Well, now it's put squarely on the backs of integrity commissioners. And I'll explain that a little bit in, in this session and in the afternoon, sorry, in the second session a little later. So we now have a role with respect to the application and enforcement. We also though, have now explicit authority to provide advice to members of council, to you with respect to the code, any ethical policies, rules and procedures and the municipal conflict of interest act. And then finally, we are also able now to provide education to the public. It used to be we could only provide education to council, to staff, to municipalities, like a training session like today. But we are specifically authorized as integrity commissioners now to provide education to the public as to the municipal accountability system. Now, if you're saying, well, what is that? Like, do we write interpretation bulletins every couple of weeks? No, we don't do that. A public session, an open session, just like you're having today, is a training session essentially for the public that educates the public as well as, as yourselves and staff as to how this whole system works. Now, the public can call us up at any time and ask us questions like, can I file a code of conduct complaint against this? How do I do that? Where is the code? How do I file an application under the municipal conflict of interest act? Can I get a copy of the code? Those are all typical questions that if they don't come to your clerk, will often come to us. And we're entitled to give that kind of advice to the public. Again, you have assigned all of those duties, functions, responsibilities to us as integrity commissioners. You can also, and this case has made it clear, now, it was always my view that if council wanted to authorize integrity commissioners to do something else, something above and beyond what just the functions were in section 223.3, then I always saw, of course, the council can do that. Well, the Croche case from Hamilton says that very clearly. We have conducted investigations of senior staff under the staff code of conduct. We've, you may not know this. Building officials have to have a code of conduct under the building code act and we've conducted investigations under that. In some cases, councils have come to us and said, you guys do investigations, you know ethics, can you do this? And we've, we never said no, we, we would do them. Clearly, Croche says that we're clearly entitled and the municipality can authorize us. Just think of the situation where there may be something that you as a council are concerned about, some ethical matter that you're concerned about. What's wrong with you asking us for an opinion on that? I've always given those types of opinions and it makes a lot of sense. It precludes, for instance, every individual member of council possibly coming and asking us a refined question. That's almost pretty much the same question. We can do that. We can also help and we've done this many, many times is help municipalities draft their codes of conduct, their complaint protocols or any other ethical policies, like the council staff relation policy, social media policies. Again, nothing wrong and nothing inherently illegal with asking your integrity commissioner to do that. One of the greatest benefits of the whole system is the advice giving function that integrity commissioners have now been expressly granted. It's the unheralded benefit of this whole system. We are now, as I said, as of March the first, 2019, expressly authorized to give you as individual members of council, advice with respect to your own obligations under the code of conduct, any ethical policy guidelines, procedures or rules, or your obligations under section five, 5.1 and 5.2 of the municipal conflict of interest act. Okay, I always say to councils, you know, you're not left alone. Some of this can be very complicated and some of it can be quite bewildering. You're entitled to ask us questions about this. And two things with that. Your request for advice, it has to be in writing, okay? And our advice to you has to take a written format. Why? Doesn't that make sense? Because you don't have the, well, I asked this question, but I got this answer. Or, no, no, that's the question I asked and we're saying, I don't think you asked that. And in fact, that's not what we told you. The whole requirement to have it in writing makes so much sense. Because then we know what the question is that's being asked. We know what all the relevant background facts are in which to assess it. And then you get something in writing from us that's clear, hopefully. And you can rely on it. Therefore, there is no questions as to whether it applies, doesn't apply. It's very clear, hopefully, because it's in writing. Now, in our complaint protocols, what we seek to do is we seek to enshrine the principle that if you ask us for advice, it's binding. Now, we put it in the code or in the complaint protocol because we think it's that important. You'll see that there's a provision, and I'll talk about it in a little bit later, in the municipal conflict of interest act that has a provision that's very similar to this. We typically put this in the complaint protocol so that the public is also aware that if you come and ask us for advice and we give you advice and you follow the advice, then we're not going to investigate any complaint. In three instances, this has actually happened and has come back to pay significant dividends. Council members have reached out to me in two cases. I can't remember the third right now, but in the two, first two cases, council members in different situations wanted to make statements after council had made a decision. They were not in favor of the decision and they did not want to disrespect the decision, disparage it in any way. They wanted to say though, that they did not agree with it. And they knew that they were going to be asked because they were very forceful in fighting against it. Well, we said to them, as long as you're respectful, of course you can indicate that you have a different view on the matter. You cannot ridicule, you cannot belittle, you cannot denigrate nor disparage the decision of council nor the members who made it. However, you are entitled to speak, to say that you didn't agree with it. In two cases, the members were very good. They actually said to me, I'm going to prepare something and I will let you vet it. Which was actually almost even more than I would have asked for. They did let me vet it. I changed it minimally because I thought the statements were very good. And you know what happened? Yep, complaints were still filed against them. There were a couple of members of council in both instances that didn't like the fact that they were still saying something. And I decided not to investigate. The reason I didn't is I said, look at your code. It says that if a request is sought, advice is given and the advice is followed, we're not investigating. And so that got us out of an investigation in two instances. And there was a third one. Yeah, sorry, can't remember the specific facts. So there is a very good reason for you to reach out to us. Now people say to me, well, hold on, are people just, is this like a cash cow for you? Are council members going to come to you every week and take up your time and you have to write something? I'll tell you, and I'm going to be as frank as I can. The budget that we have typically for the advice giving function compared to just one moderately complex investigation is miniscule compared to that. So you know, you know, the ounce of prevention, you know, the old saying, well, that's how it works here. We typically do not find that members of council are coming to us every week. We typically do not find that members of council are coming to us every week and asking for advice. Typically, they come and ask and we give advice and they'll remember it for the next time. So they don't necessarily need to ask it again. Uh, we find that most members of council are entirely respectful of the process, the fact that they are taking our time and that, that we're being paid for by the municipality. So just think about that. Just think about the cost that may go in to an investigation. The amount of diligence, the amount of back and forth, the review, the fact finding that has to go in as opposed to just the advice giving function. So when we say, by the way, that the, both the request and the advice has to be in writing, it's not our requirement, it's not the requirement of your municipality. It's the requirement of the municipal act. It's set out in the municipal act, so it's statutory. And just to be absolutely clear, when you ask us for advice, the request isn't the, isn't like this. I would like to speak to you about a matter, please call me when you can. The request is, I have a concern. It is dealing with the upcoming meeting of council. Here is a link to the report on item N B. I have a concern that I may have a pecuniary interest. Here is why I think I may have a pecuniary interest. And then there's a number of facts that are set out. That is how the request should be made. It should include all relevant facts. Again, as a, a, a request for us to just have a conversation is not a proper request. I don't have a problem having a conversation with anyone, but it won't fulfill the statutory requirements, nor will it give me in writing the facts that we need to know in order to provide advice to you. Okay? Now, I've talked about the advice giving function. I wanted to put that up front. Now I'm going to talk about investigations. In general, integrity commissioners only investigate when they are asked to investigate. And that can happen in one of two instances. The first one is if there's a formal complaint filed, okay? The second one is if council asks us to do so, and there's a specific provision of the municipal act where that may occur. Okay, so council can go and ask us to investigate or we receive a formal complaint. We have no authority on our own to go and investigate anything. Uh, I say that with one caveat. If we are already investigating one matter and we're looking into it and we discover that there may be wrongdoing on a second or multiple grounds, we will pursue it. And I think in, uh, integrity commissioners in general have taken that position. We have incredibly broad investigative powers. So I've set out a few of them right here. The first one, the most broadest one is, you, you know, the emergencies act, um, the use of the emergencies act by the federal government in the Freedom Convoy, which just had its one year anniversary. Um, uh, uh, we can constitute ourselves like a public inquiry commission, just like Justice Rollo was carrying out in Ottawa, um, uh, under the provincial, um, uh, request there. We can, if someone refuses to meet with us, to answer questions or to provide documents, we have the right to subpoena the person and to summons documents. We can constitute ourselves as a public inquiry commission. And then in subsections three and four there, you'll see that we have free access and the municipality must provide us with any information that it has, uh, available to it and any data bank or any records. So have we asked for telephone records? Yes. Have we asked to see emails? Yes, we've done those and we're entitled to do that and staff cannot refuse it. We typically cite these provisions when we put a request to staff. We have to though, conduct our investigations unlike the public inquiry commission that took place in Ottawa and in other places. We have to conduct it in confidence, okay? Everything that we learn under this part where it's five, uh, part five point one of the municipal act, we have to keep confidential. That's the advice giving. So if you give us information, we are to keep it confidential. And if we learn something in a report, uh, when we're investigating, uh, and sorry, during an investigation, we have to keep it confidential. And anyone who's acting under our instructions, uh, for instance, the I T guy who we ask for telephone records or emails, the clerk who we often liaison with because we need to have somebody that will help us with the evidence gathering at the municipality. Everything has to be kept confidential. There's two exceptions for that. The first one is, it's on the screen, it's number two, if there's a criminal code matter. If the police are investigating, they can come and ask us for any, uh, information that we have, uh, attained. Okay? And if you're wondering, I'll tell you about the second one in just a moment, the second override to the confidentiality provisions. But if you're wondering, why can't someone just file an F O I? Well, they can't because if you look at the bottom of the screen, sub three says, this provision uh, overrides the municipal freedom of information protection of privacy acts. It just doesn't apply. If, uh, your clerk receives an F O I for anything dealing with our work or an investigation or the advice, she has to deny it because F I P A just does not apply to, uh, the work that we do. Uh, if we receive a complaint and we have reasonable grounds to believe that it may contravene the criminal code or another statute, we are required to suspend the investigation and then notify the other authorities and then hold down our investigation until the matter is finally disposed of. We've had to do that several times last term on, under health and safety orders and protocols under the reopening act and under medical officer of health orders where complaints had come in and we felt that we needed to refer the matters to the police. In some instances, the police would tell us, there is no reasonable prospect of conviction. We're, we're finished our investigation. Uh, if we knew that, then we would continue and we did in one case. And we found that even though the police didn't proceed with charges under the reopening act, we were able to conduct our investigation and we did find that the member had contravened the code of conduct with respect to health and safety protocols and the code of conduct. Um, uh, in another instance, the police did charge, uh, the mayor of West Lincoln. And I can say this, it's public knowledge. Uh, the mayor of West Lincoln was, uh, uh, seen at an anti, um, anti, uh, vax, uh, rally in St. Catherine's. He was photographed, uh, without a mask, uh, and with no social distancing at a time when that was required. We referred that matter to police. The police did charge him and we could not proceed with our investigation. He was not reelected, so our investigation actually fell away, but the police charges are still, uh, I believe out there. So it does happen. Um, investigative authority incredibly broad, uh, given the decisions of the courts. Uh, we have very low obligations of disclosure. Uh, as set out in the Watson case, the middle case, we do not have to disclose each and every detail of our investigation or of a complaint. Uh, in many cases, we get allegations that you have to show us everything that you have. And we say, no, all we have to do, and what Di Biase said is, all we have to do is out, uh, indicate an outline of the complaint in sufficient detail to allow the member to, uh, respond to it. That's all that's required. We have to provide a reasonable process that ensures that a fair procedure is provided to all parties. How is all of this enforced, right? Well, it's enforced through a report. The whole purpose of this is to shed a spotlight on conduct that is wrong in the hopes that by doing so, um, uh, ethical conduct, uh, or misconduct will come to light and it will be corrected. We are entitled as the integrity commissioner to write a report. And if we find a contravention, we have it within our jurisdiction, our discretion to disclose what we believe is necessary in the report. So this is the second override to the confidentiality. So we may discover things in the investigation. We have to keep confidential. But when it comes time to write a report, in order for it to be transparent and, um, and accessible to the public, for them to be able to understand how we arrived at certain conclusions, the complainant, the member, we have to disclose certain facts and we may, and we are entitled to disclose matters that would otherwise be confidential. So that's the second override to the confidentiality provisions. The municipality has to make the report public. Typically, I will say, a report and its consideration by the council should be in an open public session. I still see some municipalities that do it in a closed. I think that is completely wrong, completely wrong and not in the interest of openness, transparency and accountability. Enforcement, well, apart from shedding the spotlight, if there's something that's gone wrong, the integrity commissioner may investigate and can recommend to council and it's council's decision to impose any penalty. There are two penalties. They're highlighted on the screen. The first one is a reprimand and it's exactly what you think it sounds like, a censure, a denouncement of the, uh, conduct of the member. Uh, and two, a suspension of the remuneration for up to ninety days, okay? Magdron Ford said very, very clearly, there are only two penalties that may be imposed. Once again, the integrity commissioner investigates, the integrity commissioner recommends penalties or, and I'll speak to you about it in just a moment, remedial measures or corrective actions. And it is the authority of council to decide whether it imposes any of the penalties that are recommended by the integrity commissioner or any of the recommended remedial measures or corrective actions, okay? So again, what does the integrity commissioner do? The integrity commissioner investigates and reports, council makes a decision not on the investigation, but on the recommendations on to impose a penalty or something else. So I'm talking about remedial measures, corrective actions. Well, what are these? Well, what they are, and they've both been authorized, that can be imposed by municipality, a remedial measure or a corrective action. What it is is, is something that could be required by council in order not to penalize, not to punish the member of council. It is put in place in order to repair, to rectify, to remediate the injury, harm or damage that's been done. And you'll see that there are a couple of cases there that say that there is broad authority to do that. However, there are three cases. The Altman case probably being the most notorious, but there's also Brampton and North Stormont, the case that I referred you to, where a council cannot impose a remedial measure or corrective action, but make it punitive in nature. So it can't be seeking to penalize in the guise of being remedial. So I'll give you the instance in Villanueve and North Stormont, just to bring one example. In that case, remember that was the case where the council member called out and disrespected the C A O at an open public meeting. The integrity commissioner said, you can't do that. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to recommend a significant penalty. I believe it was ninety day suspension of pay and a reprimand. The integrity commissioner also said, you know, there's been incredible tension between them. And I think as a remedial measure, what should happen here is the council member should not have any contact for nine months with the, uh, C A O. Let's try to keep them apart. That way there won't be the tension, there won't be the strife, there won't be the, uh, the contention between them. Let's just keep them apart. Council, when it came time to review this, said, hey, we love that. We like that so much that actually, you know what? Your remedial measure just doesn't go far enough. Let's impose the requirement that she doesn't have any dealings with any staff for the rest of the term of council. Well, the court looked at this and said, you know what? Your integrity commissioner had taken some care to craft remedial measures that were appropriate in the circumstances. He wanted to address the relationship between the C A O and the member of council. But what council wanted to do was pile on and they said, you just can't do that. You cut her knees out from under her. She can't deal with any staff? And for the remainder of the term of council, which I think was more like seventeen months? They said, that's, that's a penalty and you, we just won't allow that. You can't impose that as a remedial measure. So that's just one example where there was just a little bit too much. Uh, in all, in fact, there's three cases, the Altman case, the Dillon case and the, uh, the, the North Sturmont case, um, where the court said, you know, you're allowed to, to have remedial measures, but what you've done here is you've taken what the integrity commissioner very carefully thought about and drafted and you've just changed it from something that was a measure, a remedial measure to something that was a sanction, a penalty. You can't do that. Here's the difference in the functions of the integrity commissioner and council. The investigation and determination of whether there's been a breach of the code of conduct is in the auspices of the integrity commissioner. The integrity commissioner acts in an investigative capacity in doing their work. The decision on the imposition of any penalties or any remedial measures or corrective actions, that is the role of council. And that is council acting in an adjudicative capacity. Council's duty is to consider and respond to the report. Council is not asked, nor are they entitled to inquire as to whether there is a breach or not. They will receive, council will receive the report of the integrity commissioner. The Assaly case in Hoxbury says it very clearly. If the integrity commissioner concludes that a member of council has contravened the code of conduct, the municipality has no power to contest or question that conclusion. Its only power is to determine whether a penalty should be imposed and if so, whether to issue a reprimand or suspend the member's remuneration for up to ninety days. So, once again, when we write a report, we have considered all of the matters and we make findings of both fact and of mixed fact and law and law. When council receives a report, those findings are conclusive at that time. Council is not to weigh in, to start asking questions about, well, why did you not do this? How could you possibly have found that? Why did you not interview this person? That is not council's role to do. And in fact, in the Toronto Integrity Commissioners annual report, you will see and you will discern very clearly from what Val Jebson, who was the then integrity commissioner for Toronto, was struggling with. She had been clearly cross-examined by council on her investigative reports. And she said, it is plain to see that any value gained by assigning a neutral, independent expert officer to investigate misconduct on council's behalf is lost when council attempts to go behind the findings or challenge the lines of inquiry or analysis undertaken. She goes on and says, it is also unfair to the parties involved. Why? Well, the parties will have had the opportunity to, uh, make the complaint, to respond to the complaint, to reply to the complaint and possibly to make other submissions. And the member would have had an opportunity to either see preliminary findings or a final draft report that shows where the allegations, uh, are alleged to have been and the findings. And that's the opportunity of the member to respond. The opportunity of the member is not to go in front of council to say, I should not have been found guilty because that is not what happens at council. It's been made very, very clear, especially the Assaly case in, uh, in Hoxbury. A case that I had some involvement in, I represented the, um, the integrity commissioner in that case in court. Finally, what about an appeal? What happens if someone's not happy? You as a member of council have been found to have contravened the code of conduct and you don't believe that's correct and council also imposes a penalty. Can you appeal that decision? The answer is no. The only way that you could appeal is if the statute says you can and there's nothing in the municipal act that allows you to appeal. Okay, very clearly. Can you challenge council's decision and possibly the, the, the report underlying it? Yes, you can, in a limited way, by bringing, um, a judicial review application to the court. Okay? This is under section two of the, uh, judicial review procedures act where you can go and say, I don't believe I was entitled to a fair process and I don't believe that, uh, that council or the integrity commissioner dealt with me appropriately. Let me be very clear, it is not an appeal. All that the court will look at is, was there a fair procedure provided? Were any of the parties biased? And was the ultimate decision and the investigative report, were they reasonable? Not correct. Were they reasonable? That's what the court will look at. Okay? And finally, what happens, and I made, made mention of this, if someone doesn't like what we've done as the Integrity Commissioner, doesn't like the, the report and the investigation we've conducted, they can file a complaint with the Ontario Ombudsman under section fourteen of the Ombudsman's Act. This was changed as of January the first, two thousand sixteen. The Ontario Ombudsman was given a little bit of oversight over the conduct of accountability officers, including the Integrity Commissioner. We've had several of them, several complaints made about, about our investigations, not one of which has been sustained. And I'm assuming that there's probably a couple pending, or, or with the Ontario Ombudsman that we haven't even heard about. Ontario Ombudsman has been inundated with complaints about Integrity Commissioners. Why? Well, if someone wants to complain about a council member, then they're not happy at the actions that the Integrity Commissioner has done, particularly if they've found that the Integrity Commissioner has not proceeded with an investigation, or, or has not found any breach of the code of conduct. It's very simple for someone just to file another letter without cost to the Ontario Ombudsman who will look at it. So. I, I indicated before, we are your Integrity Commissioner. As I indicated, we were awarded the contract at Elgin County through a public procurement process. A number of municipalities in Elgin County, I don't think everyone, but I think the majority of the local municipalities have appointed us or retained us. And it's Erden Burles, that's your Integrity Commissioner, and there's seven people who provide these services. I oversee all of the services, but I don't do the investigations. And the reason being there is, I'll be frank about it, I'm the most expensive person. I don't do the investigations. I will be consulted on investigations. I will often co-write a report on an investigation, but I won't do it from beginning to end because it's just too expensive. We typically have our more junior people do the legwork on investigations, and they've been very good. There are two people on the, on the list here who are employment law lawyers, who often will work with our municipal group at the firm, and they are very well acquainted with harassment type of, of complaints, because they do workplace investigations, and they are material and significantly important to us in carrying out our, our functions and roles. So anytime that you may be involved with us, you may deal with any of the persons on this list. Typically, I am the person who gives advice to members of council. The reason being there is I'm often not away for two-week, three-week hearings. I'm typically around. I try to respond quickly, within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. That's not to say every instance we will be able to do that. In some instances, it's quite complicated, the advice that we have to give, but we also understand that you may get requests at the last minute, or you may be reading your agenda only a couple of days before the council meeting, and you need to know whether you have a pecuniary interest that you have to disclose, for example. So we're rather adept, given the bench strength that we have, to be able to respond to questions quickly and promptly. Okay? So those, I'm coming to the conclusion, Mr. Mayor, members of council, you have to have a code of conduct that covers yourselves and members of local boards. You do. There are four mandatory subject matters, as I've shown to you. Your code does cover all of them. I would recommend a relook at your code sometime this term. We, as Integrity Commissioners, have very broad authorities. We can give you advice as to your own obligations. And I want to be very clear about this, if I didn't say it before. It's your obligations. You cannot ask us for advice about someone else's obligations. Okay? Just think, the system would break down, because everyone would be asking about everybody else all the time. And it's unfair. If you are asking about someone else's obligations, we don't have all the relevant facts at hand. So how could we possibly make a determination? You can ask us for advice about your own obligations. Okay? We can also provide advice and investigate complaints into the code of conduct and other matters. And we do have a role with respect to the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. And I'll speak about it more in the second half. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I've come to the end of the, my first presentation. I will stop sharing my screen, and I'd be pleased to take any questions that you or anyone else may have on this first part.
Thank you very much, John. Certainly, you've laid out a lot of information that I don't think that anyone sitting here has heard. I think it's very important that we have these conversations this morning. And unfortunately, I think the first question that has been asked around here is, people would like to have a, a short break.
Terrific. I have no problem with that, Mr. Mayor. If you'd like, I'll get the other slide deck on the screen, but I'd be pleased to take questions on this when we come back. So I'm, whatever you'd like.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, everyone, we are back. Just wait for John to pop up on the screen. There he is.
Hello. Are you okay, Mr. Mayor, if I put up my next, oh, oh, sorry. I had indicated that I would be happy to take questions, perhaps if I, before I put up the next slide deck, if anyone has any questions.
I, I think that's a good plan. Now, certainly, your, your information was, was very precise, but does anyone have any clarification they would like on anything that John has presented to us? I'm not seeing any hands up, John, so if you'd just carry on with your next slide.
I will. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Again, if anyone has questions, then you're saving them. Well, you know, I'll get through this part, and then you can always ask all of them. So I'm going to see if I can now share and get you the second one. I'm, I think you have the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act now up.
We do.
Great. Terrific. So, so the first part of today's presentation was largely about the municipal accountability framework that's set out in a code of conduct under the municipal act. This is an entirely different statute now. The Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, which is the granddaddy of all municipal accountability statutes here in Ontario, and in fact, throughout all of Canada. The current act has been in place for now over fifty years. It was originally the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act nineteen seventy-two, and it really, really hasn't changed that fundamentally since that time. Now, I haven't traced it all the way back to eighteen forty-nine, but I've read in a number of commentaries on the, on the statute that it, some provisions actually go back to the old Baldwin Act of eighteen forty-nine. Lots of judicial consideration. It is a statute that applies to members of council and members of local boards. By the way, the definition of local board in the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act is slightly larger than it is under the municipal act for codes of conduct. There are a number of carve-outs in the municipal act that aren't in place for, for the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act definition. It does not apply to municipal staff. Its purpose, I can do no better than to quote for Moll and Fisher, a famous seminal case, where it says, the obvious purpose of the act is to prohibit members of council from engaging in the decision-making process with respect to matters in which they have a personal economic interest. So, a couple of things here. You have a connection to a financial interest. That's what you have to be aware of under the act, and it's to prohibit you from the decision-making process if you're involved in something that might affect you financially, economically, or monetarily. Okay? You, you have, take a declaration of office under two thirty-two of the municipal act. The third, the third solemn promise that you make is that you will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the M C I A. So here I am to tell you now what those are, so you can fulfill your obligations under this statute. Because why? It is a personal obligation that you, as members of council, by virtue of your elected office, have. You have a personal obligation to declare a pecuniary interest and then recuse yourself from voting or participating at all in the matter. Okay? It is not anyone else's obligations. It is the matter of personal judgment of each member. Okay? So, what is this? Well, conflict of interest, most people would think of it very differently than what's in the act. Most people would say, well, you have a personal or private matter that somehow may be seen to influence your discharge of your public duties. But that's not really what this is. What the, what the statute covers is only pecuniary interests and, right? Just a direct, indirect, or deemed pecuniary interest. And what constitutes a sufficient pecuniary interest to trigger the application of sections five, and now I would also say section five point two, this was put in place just before the amendments, of the act will not necessarily be demarcated by a bright line. What I mean by that, what I think the judge is trying to say in Cooper and Wianco is, it is not easy to tell where that line is sometimes. It is very complex, and you'll see as I go through some of the provisions what I mean by this. It's not simple to say, oh, I'm good. I can, I can go ahead with this. Or, oh, boy, I'm on this side of the line. So it's that, there is no bright line. It really is fact-driven and fact-specific, and you'll see that many of the decisions seemingly appear to contradict one another. And someone, someone will pick up a case and say, well, in this case, the court said the member was completely in breach of the Conflict of Interest Act. And in this case, which is almost the same, the court found that there was no breach at all. Well, the trick there is almost the same, because many of the determinations are very, very fact-specific. There are a number of principles that are set out in the act that help and aid to the interpretation of the act. These were put in place at the recommendation of Justice Cunningham from the Mississauga Judicial Inquiry, which dealt with conflicts of interest. The first three are pretty obvious. Those, those principles are pretty much taken from a number of judicial decisions and their paraphrases. But it's the fourth one that I think has some real bearing, and I really like the fact that it's in there. It says, there is a benefit to municipalities when members have a broad range of knowledge and continue to be active in their own communities, whether in business, in practice of a profession, in community associations, and otherwise. It's very clear. There is nothing wrong with you having ties to your community. Right? That's what you want. In your municipality, you want someone with strong roots in the community. You're happy if you, as members of council, all work in the same municipality in which you live, that your spouses, or partners, or children, or parents, they're all in the same place and are all prospering. But that might lead to potential conflicts of interest. There's nothing inherently wrong with having a conflict under the act. It's just to know what you do when you have one. Okay? Pecuniary interest, I've talked about this. It's an archaic word. I don't know why they haven't changed it to financial, but that's essentially what it means. Okay? The Mandu and Tukinhagen case, the case from Thunder Bay, said a pecuniary interest is one that essentially concerns money, a monetary, financial, economic interest. Okay? It arises, the interest can arise at a meeting of council or a committee of council, or, and this is entirely new, and I'll speak about this, or if the matter is being dealt with by staff, and staff can make a recommendation or a decision. And the second part is entirely new. There are three types of pecuniary interests. The first one is the easy one. It's the direct interest. Okay? As noted in Rivet and Braid, it doesn't mean, there is no definition of the term direct, but what, what the court said in that case is, it means something that's directly and unequivocally expressly yours. It's something that's clearly traceable. It's not deviated, doesn't come to you in another way. It comes directly to you. It's a financial interest that you may have expressly because you are a member of council. I'll give you one example. There is something proposed on a street, let's say, the improvement of the street, right? And you happen as, happen to own a bakery shop as a sole proprietor on that street. It could lead to greater property values. It could lead to a greater increase in business for you that you yourself may profit in. Or, or it may lead to a disruption of business and possibly less pedestrian traffic, for instance, if the works go ahead. So you could have a direct interest that could be positive in the sense that you could gain from it, or negative in the sense that you could lose from it. So you have to be aware of both. Okay? So that's the first one. That's the easy one. The second one is an indirect interest. Section two of the M C I A sets out that if you, as a member, have certain corporate interests, you have certain social, cultural, religious connections, or you have some business connections, you may, by virtue of them having any of those bodies having a financial interest, you may be imputed to have the same interest. Okay? So let me talk about the first three. The first three are corporate interests. They're the first three bullets. Okay? If you're a director, senior officer of a public or private company, if you're a shareholder of a private company, and God bless you, kudos to you, if you're controlling interest in a public company, if you have any of those corporate interests, and the corporation is in front of council seeking something, then the interest of the, of the company is imputed to be your interest. Okay? The, the fourth one on the line there, if you're a member of a body, remember I said, this one is, I don't know, a social, cultural, religious? Let's say that there is a nonprofit, not-for-profit corporation, a charitable foundation, a service club, right? A sporting club, that your athletic club at your municipality. Or, or you're a member of a church, a mosque, a synagogue, or a temple. If you're a member of any of those entities that I just mentioned, you're likely very much a member of a body. That term is not defined, but fortunately, we do have some guidance from the Ontario Court of Appeal that said, while the term body in the municipal act, sorry, the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act in section two is not defined, it's to be given its broadest possible application in order to fulfill the requirements under the act. So, if you're a member of any of those bodies that I just mentioned, and there could be many others, again, an athletic club, a service club, a, some place of worship, a charitable foundation, if you're a member, then if that entity, if that body has a financial interest in something that's before council, they're seeking funding, they're seeking a grant, they're seeking an approval for which they can benefit, that interest of the body, financial interest, is imputed to be yours. Okay? The last two, partnership and employer. If you're a member of a partnership and your partner comes in front of council, or you're employed by an employer, and the employer comes in front of council and is seeking something, and it could be direct. It could be that the employer is seeking an award of an R F P, for instance. Okay? Or it could be that the employer is there to get some benefit for itself, in another way. Your partner is there representing somebody. Your, your partner is an accountant, is a lawyer, and they're there representing someone who has a financial interest. Well, the partnership, the employer has a financial interest, that financial interest is imputed to be yours. That is what an indirect pecuniary interest is under section two. Okay? That's, this is one that causes a lot of consternation. The other one that causes a lot of consternation, and it gets more complicated, is your spouse, uh, same-sex common law, your child, minor or an adult or your parent. If any of those persons has a direct or even an indirect financial interest, pecuniary interest, it is deemed to be your interest. So you have to be very careful. Your spouse may be employed by a person or a company that is then in front of council. So you would have a deemed indirect pecuniary interest by virtue of your spouse being employed by the applicant who is seeking the approval on item one A on the council agenda. I've pretty much written your uh declaration of pecuniary interest, okay? Those are the three types of interest. Direct is simple, it's direct. Indirect means you have some connection to a company, a body or a business that may be in front of council with some financial interest. And then the last one is a family member who's a spouse, child or parent. If they have a direct or an indirect interest, it's deemed to be yours. Notice that the list is very short. People have criticized this, most recently Justice Morocco in the Collingwood Judicial Inquiry. And he suggested, recommended actually, uh, an exponential uh, um, increase in the number of family interests. Notice it doesn't say nieces, nephews, aunts and uncles, siblings. It's a pretty confined list. And again, it's come under a number of uh, heads of criticism under uh, uh judicial investigations and reports and the courts. So what are your duties as a member of council? Okay, you have a pecuniary interest, okay? If you're present at a meeting at which there is a pecuniary interest that will be considered by council in order for council to make a decision, a reasoned decision that might have some bearing on the ultimate decision, you have to do two things and you have to stop, sorry, you have to do one thing and you have to recuse yourself from doing two things. So the positive one, you have to disclose the pecuniary interest. At the top of every council meeting, it's probably the second, maybe third, maybe fourth matter. There are uh declarations of pecuniary interest. The chair will always ask, does anyone have any declarations of pecuniary interest? That's under this Act. That's your opportunity to disclose your pecuniary interest in a verbal sense, okay? So you have to disclose the interest and the general nature. So I gave you an example before where your spouse may be before council. Uh, sorry, your spouse's employer may be before council seeking something. You would say, my spouse, uh, I have a, I have a, uh, a deemed pecuniary interest by virtue of my spouse's indirect interest because uh his employer is in front of council, okay? You then obviously cannot participate in the decision-making process, nor can you vote. And you cannot attempt to influence the matter in any way, okay? Those are your obligations. There is a new obligation and I call this the Hazel McCallion, rest in peace, Hazel McCallion Amendment. The judicial uh inquiry in Mississauga in two thousand eleven, two thousand and twelve looked at potential conflicts of interest that Mayor McCallion had with respect to the hotel and convention center development that she was proposing for many years in the downtown of Mississauga. Her son, Peter McCallion owned, had an equity interest in world-class developments that was proposing to develop a hotel and convention center complex. Justice Cunningham, who presided over the judicial inquiry, said she did disclose a pecuniary interest every time it came in front of council. She did, under the municipal Conflict of Interest Act. However, that didn't end her obligations. Behind the scenes, she was doing everything that she could to twist arms and push buttons with staff and others. That was inappropriate. So now this amendment, section five point two, says that if the matter is in front of an officer or employee of the municipality for a decision or even a recommendation, you, as a member of council, cannot use your office to attempt to influence their recommendation or decision, okay? Remember, you, as a member of council, have a certain status. You're a member of council. I understand you may not have any unilateral executive or ministerial powers. But anytime you speak to a member of staff or a consultant, they will look at you as a member of council. So you cannot attempt to use your office to influence their decisions in any way. That's the second type of uh requirement that you have. There are, however, a number of exceptions. There are eleven exceptions. The first nine are very specific and they've been termed to be commonsensical and self-explanatory. I put the first five on the screen. I'm next going to put the next six on the screen. But you'll see the last two are set out red. The reason I put those in red is those two are general, they're not specific. The first, the first uh nine are very specific. The last two are the ones that have engendered the greatest number of court decisions because almost everybody argues that uh one or both of the exceptions will apply to them, okay? And I'll speak about those a little more specifically. Now, I do want to highlight one on the screen here, H. That says, uh, if you have a pecuniary interest that arises because you are a director or a senior officer of a municipal corporation or you're an appointee by your council to a board, commission or other body, then the pecuniary interest does not disqualify you from participating in the decision-making at council, okay? Remember, I just talked to you about the uh provisions of section two of the M C I A, an indirect interest. And I said, if you're a member of a body, that means if you're a member of a body in your personal capacity, okay? However, if council has appointed you to sit on another body, the Committee of Adjustment, um, the Conservation Authority or some other body, then you are accepted and you're allowed to sit at council and continue to make decisions, even though you're a member of that body and that body may may have a financial interest in the matter. So there's a specific carve-out for that, okay? So that's just the refinement of what I wanted to uh tell you before. These are, things are very complicated and that's why sometimes it might be a good idea to reach out to us for advice. I'm going to talk to you briefly though, and a little more specifically about the last two because these are the ones that create a lot of uh issues. Now, when I said to you, there's an exception for a pecuniary interest that is an interest in common with electors. Generally, you probably thought to yourself, that must mean it's every elector in the municipality. Well, it could be, or if the matter under consideration is a much smaller area, it could be only that area. Isn't that interesting? And that's because there's a specific definition of that term. So I'll give you an example. In your municipality, you may have a stretch of road that's, let's just say it's a little more um, uh urbanized than uh than rural, okay? And let's say it's a stretch of road with three, four kilometers. And there is a proposal to modernize uh that road with all new uh, uh, streetscape services. So underground wiring, uh, boulevards, sidewalks, curbs, right? Do you have a pecuniary interest if you have a property within that stretch of road and council's considering whether to award a contract to uh, to allow the modernization of that streetscape? Well, perhaps, perhaps you fall within the area of jurisdiction, right? Let's say that everyone there owns a commercial property. Clearly you fall within the same class as everyone else. What happens if you were the only residential property on the street and everyone else had a commercial property? Are you in the same class? Maybe not, right? You have to be concerned about whether it is a difference in nature or kind. Let's just say, let's go back to my original example. You have a commercial property, just like everyone else on that stretch of road, okay? And so I would say, okay, you fall within the same uh class. What happens if your property has by far the largest frontage? Everyone else has, I don't know, let's just take a number, um, I don't know, uh, twenty meters, but you have fifty. Would that be a difference in nature and kind or a difference of degree? I would suggest to you that that would only be a difference of degree. It's the same nature. You have a commercial property, just like everyone else. But yours is somewhat different only because of the degree. You have a much larger frontage than everyone else. Those are just some examples, okay? Please be alive to the fact that you may have a matter in front of council, just like the example that I gave, the stretch of road, which is, say, four kilometers, right? What happens if someone, you look at, you go, oh, I don't fall within that stretch of road. I'm actually another kilometer north or south or wherever, okay? But at the council meeting, someone looks at it and one of your fellow members of council says, I don't understand, why are we only letting the contract for, you know, half the stretch of the road? It goes for, you know, eight kilometers. Why don't we just award the contract instead of having to do another RFP award? Why don't we just award the whole contract and I'm proposing an amendment to the motion? You have to be alive to that to decide, uh-oh, now I wasn't going to be within this area, but now all of a sudden there's an amendment that now puts me squarely within the area. What do I do? So you have to consider that. You have to be alive to possible modifications to matters like that at council. I know, it's a little tricky. An exception, this is the last one, for J, no, for K, sorry. The exception for remote or insignificant interest. And I can do no better than to quote from the Whiteley and Schneur case. Would a reasonable elector, being apprised of all of the circumstances, be more likely than not to regard the interest of the counselor as likely to influence the counselor's action and decision on the question? Okay, that's the test. It's pretty straightforward. It looks at what is a reasonable elector, not someone who's a little like, you know, nuts out to get you. Someone who's reasonable about it and who has considered all of the circumstances, not just cherry picked one thing and said, ha, you're wrong, okay? That's the test. It just talks about whether, you know, the uh, the, the, the interest is indirect or trivial or remote or speculative, right? It deals with those things. Remoteness, interestingly enough, deals with whether there is an immediacy uh, and a potential for an economic gain or loss. And the case that makes that out is the one that I quoted there, Darcy and Minot. In that case, only three hundred dollars was at stake and the member argued, what's three hundred dollars? It's like nothing. And the court said, no, no, you were going to get three hundred dollars immediately if you voted for this. That's improper. Significance, however, doesn't relate to the monetary amount or the quantum at stakes. It deals with the importance of the matter to the member. And the case that made it out is the infamous M C I A case that went uh to the divisional court, uh, Magdern Ford from uh ten years ago. Uh, actually, just about to the day, ten years ago. I think the decision was made January twenty-six, two thousand thirteen. Um, it's the significance of the matter to the member. Um, infamously, Mayor Ford at the time said, your honor, the amount that I'm being asked to repay is three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. I'm a millionaire, what difference would that make to me? And the court said, well, first of all, three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, Mayor Ford, is a significant amount of money for any person in the province. But secondly, you've missed the point. You spoke very passionately uh on a prepared speech. I saw it on video at council. This was matter, uh, this was a matter of significance to you. So now you don't fall within the exception here, okay? There is a limited exception, and this is the Mayor Ford, the Rob Ford, uh, R I P uh, exception. And this was put in place because many people said, both Justice Cunningham at the Mississauga Judicial Inquiry, both the lower court as well as the divisional court in the Magdern Ford case said, we find it a little unfair that Mayor Ford could not stand up in front of council and actually plead the fact that he shouldn't be penalized uh, because most persons are entitled to stand in front of the tribunal who's making the decision. Uh, however, there's no exception in the Act and we can't read it in. So there was a limited exception. If you ever find yourself in front of your council and we are recommending a penalty, you are entitled to speak to the recommendations in that report in front of council. You're entitled to try to convince council not to impose the penalties. What you can't do ultimately is vote on the matter, okay? You just can't vote. So it's a limited exception or a partial exception. The disclosure that you have to make, there are two types. But the first one is it arises at the meeting at which the pecuniary interest is to be discussed. You have to disclose the interest and the general nature. The fact that you're absent at the meeting is not an excuse. You have to read your agendas and you have to disclose it at the next possible meeting, okay? You also have to file a written statement of disclosure. This is new, okay, under five point one. Please, please remember this. You only, you have to say it and then you have to file a written statement. You have to give it to the clerk at the meeting or as soon as reasonable thereafter. Here's my best practice recommendation to you. You know you have to say it. You know you have to orally declare a pecuniary interest when you're asked or, or when you find out about the pecuniary interest arising, okay? You also then have to file a written statement. Why don't you write out the statement beforehand? And why don't you read it out when it comes time to declare the pecuniary interest on the particular matter? Why do I say that? Well, your clerk has to maintain a registry, not only of what you said orally at the meeting in the minutes, but also your filing of the written statement. What happens if you say different things? One of these days, someone is going to file a complaint about that and it could be subject to uh some problems. So my best practice is write it out beforehand, read it out at the beginning of the meeting when you're asked and then file that at the meeting, before the conclusion of the meeting with the clerk. So then you're all copacetic with the statutory requirements. Um, I said this before, let me reiterate it again. There is express statutory authority for us to give you advice on your obligations under the municipal Conflict of Interest Act, just like there is for a code of conduct, okay? You can reach out to us in writing, give us all the background facts and we can provide you with advice, okay? It has to be in writing, as I said before. Here are the actual requirements from the statute, okay? Remember, the request must give us the background facts so that we understand them. I'm always happy to have a conversation with any member, but you have to put it in writing and you have to give us the facts. Please don't call me and start iterating, uh, you know, some complicated factual situation. I may hear you at the time, but I may not be, you know, taking it all in. It has to be in writing. So please don't get mad at me if I say to you, oh, by the way, everything that you've told me, could you please now put it in writing? Cause it's a statutory requirement. So I'm going to go through the obligations one more time, very quickly. And then I will try to talk to you about the way the system has changed now on applications to challenge whether you contravene the Act or not. So here, here they are. Again, I'm going to go through them quickly, but uh, by all means, I, I think I've said to Jen, I'm happy for you to have a copy of this PowerPoint presentation, perhaps as a guide uh to you going forward. First obligation, disclose, disclose before the matter is discussed, okay? And I gave you an example of how to do so. Do not participate, do not vote on the matter, okay? You need to recuse yourself from doing so. Second recusal is do not attempt to influence the voting in any way. Don't do what happened in Biffes versus Sainsbury. The council member there was, was told, well, you don't have a pecuniary interest. She said, no, I think I do and said, I'm going to disclose. Before the meeting took place, what did she do? She went up to two people who she thought were her friends. In fact, I think they were her frenemies because what she said is, I can't vote on this, I'm going to be declaring a pecuniary interest. Could you guys please support this? I think it's important. Well, what do they do? They told on her. And the court said, you can't do that. That would be inappropriate. You're not to influence the voting before, during, or after the meeting. You might say to yourself, after the meeting? How does that happen? Well, no matter may come back before council if you start trying to influence it. May come back, maybe on a reconsideration, maybe some other way. Or it could be only at a committee meeting that you've made a decision that the matter has to go before council. So remember, no influence whatsoever. The next one is something that I hadn't talked to you about yet, and it's interesting because in Ontario, it's only one of two jurisdictions that doesn't require you to leave the setting of an open meeting if you have declared a pecuniary interest. You only cannot attend a closed meeting. Every other jurisdiction except Ontario and one other one, which has escaped me at the moment, say that you have to actually leave the confines of the closed meeting. Again, my best practice recommendation to you, to ensure that no one can say that you attempted to influence the voting is, why don't you leave the confines of the council chamber or the video setting? If you have a pecuniary interest, then no one can accuse of you sighing heavily, rolling your eyes or doing anything as an attempt to influence the voting. You have to file the written statement, as I indicated. It has to be filed at the meeting or as soon as possible thereafter. And the Hazel McCalleen Amendment, do not attempt to influence any employees of the municipality if they have a decision or a recommendation to make and you have a financial interest in the matter. Okay? Quorum, as you know, the rule for quorum is you have to have a majority of members. So three members at your municipality. What happens if three members declare pecuniary interest? Well, the act says you can go down to two members. So it has happened. I had an interesting situation last term. I had eight out of the nine members of my council, the city of Vaughan, declare pecuniary interests. I only had one member left standing. I had to go to court. I've never had to do this before. I, I went to court and asked the court for special dispensation, which is built into section seven of the act. The court did grant it and said, yeah, otherwise your hands are tied. You can't make it a, council can't make a decision because eight of the nine are, are precluded from doing so. So what happens if there's a possible alleged contravention? The law always used to be that the only person who could challenge a member of council was an elector and that person had to go to court to do it. Well, this is now changed. An application to the court, to a judge to determine whether a member had breached the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act and that a penalty should be imposed, can now still be brought by an elector. It can also be brought by a person demonstrably acting in the public interest. And we don't know what that is. There's no definition and there's really been no judicial consideration. And look at the last one, a municipal integrity commissioner. We have now had it placed on our backs, the possibility that we can conduct an inquiry and make an application to the court to have a member penalized under the act. The application period remains a tight short fuse limitation of six weeks. The six weeks starts to run from the date that the applicant had a reasonable subjective belief that the mayor, that the member may have contravened the statute. Okay? They don't have to have certainty. All they have to have is a reasonable subjective belief. It's an objective standard. The ultimate limitation period is six years. So even though someone may have just found out about it within the last six weeks, but the incident happened more than six years ago, then it's barred. Last term, there was a, there was a, a case brought in, uh, against the mayor of Haldeman County. I think there were seven allegations. The court found six of them had happened more than six years ago, so they were out of time, statute barred. And the last one didn't have any veracity. There is, uh, if a matter is brought to the integrity commissioner during an election blackout period between nomination day and voting day, the integrity commissioner can't make an application to court. Why? Well, it would prejudice the, the member, um, if that were to be done. So the municipal act was changed. In addition to investigating, um, code of conduct breaches, the integrity commissioner is now entitled on an application from an elector or a person demonstrably acting in the public interest. The integrity commissioner is allowed to conduct an inquiry to see if the member has possibly breached the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. We have one hundred and eighty days, because of the complexity involved, to determine whether we believe that there's been a contravention or not. At the end of that period, once we conclude our inquiry or our investigation, we have a decision to make. Unlike in the normal course where we write a report and say to council, "We believe that these are the facts and there's a contravention and we're recommending a penalty or remedial measure." Here, we have a decision. It's the only time that the word decision is used for integrity commissioners. The integrity commissioner doesn't go to council to ask what council wants to do. The integrity commissioner goes to council and tells them what the integrity commissioner is going to do. And we have two things to do. We can go to court or not go to court. That, those are the decisions. So if we find that a member has not breached the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, clearly, we will likely determine that we won't go to court. If, however, we find that a member may have breached the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, we still have a decision to make. Do we go to court or do we not go to court? Last term, I had a member of council who happened to be a developer of the municipality. We determined that she breached the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. However, we had looked at the law at the time and it appeared that the courts were very hesitant to significantly penalize the member of council. So we made a decision, even though we had determined what we thought was a breach of the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, that the courts would not likely impose a big penalty. And we decided not to incur the significant costs of going to court. And so we made a decision not to do so. What did that hap, what happened? Well, there were three members of council that who were very upset with us, who said, are you kidding? You found a contravention, why didn't you go to court? We said, you're talking over a hundred thousand dollars of costs here. And we didn't think we were going to get a significant penalty. Well, we had three people angry at us. What happens if we had gone to court? Well, we would have had the other three people probably angry at us. So no one really wins. The costs of the integrity commissioner going to court are paid for by the municipality. We always have to keep that in mind. The, we are aware of a couple of other instances in the province last term where integrity commissioners did find contraventions, but exercised their discretion to not make an application to the court for additional penalties. What are the penalties for contravention? Well, let me say that they're very significant. The first two probably look familiar because I, they're right out of the code of conduct penalties. Those are new provisions that have been put in place. But look at numbers three, four and five. A contravention of the MCIA can lead to removal from office, can lead to disqualification of running for local office for up to seven years. And not just of your municipality, but anywhere in Ontario. And finally, if a member has profited by voting on a matter in which they had a financial interest, they can be ordered to pay restitution. Very significant penalties. There is now a broader range of penalties. There used to only be the last three. They have now expanded it. The, they, the province has expanded it and has made it broader. A judge may impose any or all of those penalties. Okay? What happens? What will the judge consider in making their decision on whether to impose a penalty or not? The judge will consider these things. There's four things here. I highlighted B because I think it's important. The first one, did you take all reasonable measures to prevent the contravention? Two, did you disclose in a request for written advice from the integrity commissioner, all relevant facts? Did you then get the advice from the integrity commissioner? Did you follow the advice? If you did, that's something the judge will consider. And I'll tell you, if you did do that, even though the judge may have cited otherwise, the judge will say, it's not your fault. It may be the integrity commissioner's fault. And then finally, in C, these are the two saving provisions that used to be put in the act, that were in the act, I think, since the nineteen seventy-two. Did you commit the contravention through pure inadvertence? So you didn't turn your mind to it? You blurted something out, you started to speak to it, you started to defend yourself without thinking about it? Or did you turn your mind to it and just make an honest, bona fide air in judgment and just made the mistake? That's what the judge will consider, uh, and, and you can't be willfully blind. That's what, uh, the court said in Magdern Ford. Interestingly enough, it used to be incredibly hard to remove a member from council for the MCIA. It had happened over the years, infamously in the Magdern Ford case where Rob Ford was removed initially, but then he, uh, on appeal was able to turn that around. There have been, in the last fourteen months, three applications to the courts by integrity commissioners where members have been removed from council. The Budarik case, uh, councillor Budarik was a new member of council. She was a paralegal. Her son had been, uh, asked, uh, he had three times not complied with an open fire ban that had been put in place by the fire chief of the municipality. The third time, he was ordered to pay a service charge. Somehow, the service charge had to go in front of council for approval and councillor Budarik defended her son. The court said, you cannot do that and removed her from council. The Espinola, uh, versus, uh, Maureen Van Alstine case is a case where we had, uh, we represented the integrity commissioner. Maureen Van Alstine, uh, was a member of council who terrorized staff. She, uh, perpetuated a culture of fear. She basically got many of the senior staff administration to leave because of her conduct. She had twice been under investigation and had been found to have contravened the code of conduct with, for disrespectful conduct against members of, uh, of staff and had been twice penalized. She had been warned. You can speak to the matter, you cannot vote. The third time that a complaint came in front of council, she decided to thumb her nose at the mayor who filed the complaint, at the integrity commissioner who had the audacity to investigate and find that she yet again had breached the act and had recommended penalties and at the, at her council, she voted. Well, the court said, can't do that, removed her from office. This was, uh, in, um, May of last year, March of last year. And finally, just two weeks ago, on, on January the ninth, the mayor of Elliott Lake was removed from council for having, uh, breached the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. What did he do? He dissuaded council from locating, um, at the preferred location, a entertainment and sporting complex hub to a location that was directly in front of property, thirty acres of property that he and his wife owned. That's where he wanted the new entertainment and sporting complex to be located. The court found, wow, you have breached the act. By the way, you've breached the act, we're going to remove you and we're going to disqualify you for two years. So that means that council, in making a decision whether to appoint or to run a by-election, cannot reappoint councillor Patri to, uh, to council as the mayor. And if there was a by-election, he cannot run in the by-election if held within two years. So there's been some success in removing members of council. So please, please be aware of that, significant penalties. What happens if a member of council votes and they shouldn't have voted? Well, the decision that they voted on is not automatically void. It's deemed to be voidable and it's the council who can make the decision to void the, to void the approval decision or whatever was passed. Okay? There is an ability to appeal. There is a limited as-of-right appeal. Under section eleven of the act, it says, "An appeal lies from any order made under section nine. An order which can include any of these penalties will only be made if there is a finding of a contravention." Okay? So if an appeal lies from any order, that means that if someone brings a complaint, sorry, an application against you in court and there's no finding of a contravention, then there's no order and that's it. The matter is over. There is no ability to go further. However, if there is an order, there is an ability to appeal. Both the integrity commissioner may appeal. This happened in Elliott Lake in a different case where the integrity commissioner was not happy with, uh, the, the court finding that there was only, that, that there was a contravention, but that the only penalty that would be imposed was a reprimand. So the integrity commissioner appealed. Typically, it's the council member who appeals because they've been found to have been in contravention. Okay? Councillor Budarik did attempt to appeal and she was unsuccessful. Councillor Van Alstine did not appeal and, but ran for office and, uh, was a distant third. And, um, right now, I am aware in Elliott Lake councillor, uh, sorry, the former mayor Patri will be filing an appeal. The reason I know that is I'm legal counsel to the city of Elliott Lake. The divisional court is the last court of appeal. You cannot go to the court of appeal. It's unusual. There are some, there are some statutes in Ontario that limit your right to appeal. Even though the court of appeal is the highest court in Ontario, you cannot go there on a municipal conflict of interest appeal. Okay? The divisional court's the last court of resort. Okay? Why? They, the, the, the province wanted, in its wisdom, to make these things over uh, and not have them appeal and appeal and appeal, possibly all the way to Supreme Court of Canada. My conclusions, I quote from Green and Bohrins, a seminal case. "Each conflict of interest case must largely stand on its own facts." Remember I said, there are hundreds of cases. It's such a small statute. There's only fifteen sections. And really, I would only recommend, you don't have to read it all. Sections two, three, four and five, those are the sections that you have to be aware of. Please read it, please try to understand it. If you don't, you can come and ask us. But most decisions are made on the very specific facts. The determinations are all fact-driven. My conclusions, Mr. Mayor, members of council, conflict of interest is not nearly as broad as the public thinks it is under the statute. It is, the key is financial interest. Do you have a financial interest? It can be positive or negative in nature. There are a large number of exemptions, which I pointed out, the first nine, very specific, the last two, very general. There are significant sanctions, including removal and disqualification from office. And it has recently occurred three times in the last fourteen months. There are some saving provisions that will, judge will consider and possibly, if applicable, will decide that you didn't breach the act. And finally, there are abundant and at times very contradictory cases that, uh, that are of importance to you. So you can always reach out to us for advice. So, um, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm going to stop sharing my screen now. I think, uh, I'm going to do this. There you go. And I think we're now back to seeing me, unfortunately for you.
Well, thank you so much, John. Certainly, uh, I've heard a lot of things this morning that, uh, over the many years of sitting on council, I've not heard before. And I, I think you capitalized it in a, a very difficult subject into, uh, you've broken it down into certainly, uh, components that I think are much more clear to me than what they were in the past. So, uh, does council have any more questions for John? Well, that must have been a very good presentation. Uh, I know this council and they're always, always have a question somewhere in the back of their mind, John. So obviously you've done a very good job and I, I have to commend you. That was, uh, that was a very, very good presentation and you're a very good presenter. So, uh, I, I think we chose wisely when we picked your firm for our integrity commissioner.
Oh, well, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Those are very kind words. I do appreciate it. I, I must say, I have tried to really concentrate in this area, especially over the last ten years. I first started doing integrity commissioner work, uh, about ten years ago, two thousand thirteen or so. I had taught a course in municipal ethics at Ausgood Hall Law School. I had taught a course in municipal ethics at Ausgood Hall Law School. And so I, I tried to to get really ingrained in this area. I find it fascinating. It could be a very frustrating area, as you can appreciate sometimes. But I think we're quite well-equipped at the firm. We've acted for respondents in defending council members in M C I A applications in the court. And as I indicated to you, we have acted on the other side in bringing applications against members of council. So we know it from both ends. I like to think that we bring that knowledge into it. One thing that I didn't really say to you is we do act for about a dozen integrity commissioners in the province, giving them advice, sometimes ghostwriting their reports, helping them with research and of course, representing them in the courts and on M C I A applications when they're bringing it or defending them when they are have judicial review applications. We have actually at the moment several of them that were going to appear in court on behalf of. So I think, I'm going to say this and I think we're well-positioned to to represent you. And please, if you have any questions and maybe someone doesn't necessarily want to say it in a live public setting, if you do have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out for our advice. And I thank you again for the amount of time that you've given us. I do want to thank both Magda and Jenna for giving me two and a half hours today to speak to you. I, I hope you thought it was well worth it and I thank you very much for your attention.
Well, it seemed to go by very quick, so it must have been very engaging. With that, is there any other issues that we have before us, Madam Clerk?
Sir, no, we just need to adjourn the meeting. There is a recommendation. Would you like me to read it? That West Algonquin Committee of the whole hereby adjourn at eleven twenty-two A M to meet at the call of the chair.
A mover and seconder? Moved by Tressa and seconded by Richard. One last question, John, before we call that a carried vote. Your presentation to my other colleagues across Algonquin County, you're certainly in a position to make this presentation to other jurisdictions.
Yes, sorry, am I on? Yes, I am. Yes, yes, I am. Mr. Mayor, we often do this. I think several of them have reached out to do something very similar to this. Sometimes the county puts it together and does a joint session for all the locals, which I always thought would be a very good way of doing it because you do it once. But yes, we certainly are available if you think it would be of benefit to you, of course, to sit on county council.
Well, certainly I will be bringing this to their attention that it's something that they should consider for each one of their municipalities. Certainly, countywide, well, if you do it at the county, you're only catching the mayors. And I think it's so important that you catch, catch the council members too because it's, it's critical that they have a good understanding of it. So thank you again, John, and have a very nice day.
Thank you. You as well.